Welcome to the recessed regular meeting of the Pasca Gula City Council. Today is December 20th, 2022. The time is now 6:00 P.M. Thank you to those who are in attendance in council chambers here at City Hall, as well as those viewing online. We're happy to have you join us. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Eric Cant. And Councilman Hyde will lead us in the place of allegiance. Please stand.
Father, thank you so much for your blessing and for your favor. We thank you, Lord, for life. We thank you for the seasons, we get to celebrate the mere reason of our existence. For, Lord, you love this so much, you sent your Son, Jesus. So I pray that tonight by your Spirit that you would direct and lead in all this one with guidance. And, Lord, just bless every council member, the mayor, Lord, and all the staff of the city. You just ask your favor again in Jesus' name, right?
Amen.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Gentlemen, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. On behalf of the citizens on our side.
Uh huh.
If I can speak about the status of the bill.
Okay, so during the council items, mayor council items, Councilman Hyde has one item to add, that'll be thirteen C. One. Okay? Any other changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Certainly.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Although the favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Uh, tonight, we are happy to recognize any members of the mayor's youth council that are here? You're a youth council member?
No.
No? Next, we have our community recognition session. Pasca Gula Redevelopment Authority Monthly Update.
Yes, sir, Mayor Willis. We just have a few updates at this time from the redevelopment authority. We had our regular meeting yesterday morning. Just three items to note. The 711 Krebs Avenue building, which used to be the former Purple Building, which was Southern Mills like the ghost. That project has come to completion in supporting all residential units at this time. It's a great, great structure, it's a great project. We're looking forward to folks pop line that building. In addition, the 3112 Canty Street building, which used to house a few law offices, is currently under construction. You know, the majority of the interior demolition work has been completed. That's going to have, I believe, eight residential units. And last but not least, the former Main Street building, which was recently purchased by the Hinkles, is going through a great progress and is getting closer to completion. That's going to house the Lee Tracy Boutique Shop and a few residential units.
Thank you, Mr. Silverman. Next, we have public comments section. We're pleased to provide an opportunity in each meeting for comments by citizens, limited to three minutes of speaking time per speaker, and no more than a total of thirty minutes. The public comments section of the agenda is not a question and answer session. The mayor, council, and administration officials will take comments under advisement and may respond or take other potential action at a later time if warranted. Tonight, we have one person who would like to speak. Pastor Cant, you're up again.
Thank you again for the opportunity to kind of make notes. You probably already aware, but I want to officially introduce to you guys myself for those of you that I don't know. I am running for Charles Busby seat in District 111. Big shoes to fill, of course. And so we really just wanted to say, hey, here we are. I know many of you guys, and I know we're just now meeting a word out about our campaign. Love our city, love our region, and we're just really excited. As far as I know, there's only one other that may be running for the race. And so I just want to be here tonight to formally introduce myself to you guys and just say, hopefully, after maybe a year from now, we'll be able to work together. And from that.
Thank you, Pastor Cant. I appreciate you offering yourself for that position. Thank you. Next, we have two public hearings from the planning and building department of this church. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we have ordinance amending UDO to allow tattoo and body piercing by special use in neighborhood commercial. I'm gonna have to skip through, and this is a little patch. The city wishes to amend the various provisions of R. 4, U. standards of unified development ordinance, to provide as follows. Amended table 42B2, principal table, to allow tattoo and body piercing establishments in neighborhood commercial district by special use. The revisions, table 42B2, are needed to promote development. There are many vacant structures in these areas of neighborhood commercial that will more than likely stay vacant if we don't open some of this up. The tattoo and body piercing is not what it used to be. It's not full of biker bar. It's not, you know, persona of what everybody thinks it is anymore. Most of them are art galleries. They do tattoo and body piercing. That's where their main income comes from. There are things that are allowed in neighborhood commercial districts that are a lot more out there as far as type of noise, bars, nightclubs, they're allowed in neighborhood commercial with special use. I mean, you could tell, Mayor, special use in neighborhood commercial. This kind of fits the area, the different areas. But special use would give us a chance to look at them and for the residents to speak out if they're against it. So tonight, we're asking for your blessing on this. The planning board recommended for it is what we're doing. It's a blank sale now, it's not allowed. So we're what we're doing with a special use. It's a gross floor limit of 10,000 square feet. I've never seen a tattoo studio at 10,000 square feet, but this is what we have.
Any questions? Comments of Mr. Church concerning this change to the UDO?
Josh, if we do allow by special use, will we be able to limit the time of operation? Like we say, 10 o'clock or 12 o'clock, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, you know, most of our neighborhood commercial, looking at the building map, there are some that are outskirts of neighborhood that may back up to residential. Those shouldn't be a problem. But we have a ton of neighborhood commercials that is surrounded by community commercial, cross street community commercial, stores, bars, those areas. It should make it easy for these people to be able to open these businesses.
This would give us the ability to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Case-by-case basis.
And that was my question. We are, not only we, but the planning commission will look at each application on a case-by-case basis and then send their recommendation to us. And we, as a council, will be able to look at each one on a case-by-case basis.
If we leave it with a special use, we can look on a case-by-case. I was not committed by rights, it's by special use.
Has there been interest in some of the pieces of property that are underdeveloped?
There have. There's some interest now. Previously, there were some that just did not fit, even if it was allowed. But there's a couple that have reached out recently, wanting to do something, and there's some good area for it. It's a highly commercialized area, there's a lot of businesses there that are open until midnight. So it's a good fit for a lot of areas.
My only concern is that every one of these applications for special use by tattoo or piercing get a very close look to see, will this truly fit into the area where it's being proposed and not change or disrupt the character of that neighborhood as a whole? And I hope that we will take that seriously. Don't even bring them to us if it doesn't. Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Mayor.
Before we move on, I couldn't either of the board, if there's any public comment. Is anyone here present to speak for or against this proposal to amend Article 4 of the City of Pasca Gula's Unified Development Ordinance regarding tattoo or bar or body piercing establishments?
I have one question, I'm sorry, can I ask? Is there gonna be some type of, like, set standard of what they have to look like? Or what, you know, because I've been in a lot of tattoo shops. Some of them, like you said, are art shops, are beautiful, and they do great work. And there's some scum.
I just wanted to cling to Pasca Gula a little. I mean, that's my concern.
You know, it's going back to trying to clean up some of these areas. There are certain standards, building. Some of these buildings, anything's gonna be approved. We've got some bad buildings in this town, so anything's gonna be approved of. But speaking of Mr. Silverman, trying to clean up some of these areas, a lot of these areas we're trying to clean up are neighborhood commercial. So, yeah, I mean, we're looking at, you know, the size on these buildings, doing something good when we get it cleaned up. So there's gonna be a huge change. The buildings that are being reached out to now, they look horrible. They've already cleaned some of these buildings up, and I hope that they can do this. So, I mean, it's gonna make an impact, get some empty buildings cleaned up, and some business in there.
Any further questions, discussions? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Next, Mr. Church.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an applicant, Fire Block candidate, this John and John and Kenny, asked to request a variance from the 250-foot from residential use to operate cannabis dispensary in a light industrial position. The applicant believes has purchased property or is in progress purchasing the property to operate cannabis dispensary. The subject property is in a light industrial, it does not require special use, but it is within the 250-foot of a residential use. It is right next door to a home. Back of the building backs up to somebody's yard. The subject property is light industrial, you have neighborhood commercial to the north across Telephone Road, and community commercial to the south. The applicant is requesting to send back variance to 250-foot, and it's gonna be the total 250 feet. They are abiding lots. Property has been many things over the years. It was a jewelry store, pawn shop.
Medical office.
Medical office. It's been multiple things there that property. It is a good location for this, where it's at, except for it being abiding the residential.
And it's directly across the street from the neighborhood, is that right?
Well, there's neighborhoods, most of them along there is commercial. The houses that were north of there on the other side of the road are now commercial. So it's.
Chriswell.
Yeah, Chriswell going north, they're not being used as residences anymore. But the, you know, you see here, you got the corner lot where this property is at, then the two lots behind it are residences.
Where about this is located at?
This is the corner of Chriswell and Telephone Road.
Just northwest corner. Northwest of the road, Keith Funeral Home.
The planning board recommended against this two-year time variance. My neighbor, folks here might want to speak upon this.
Is there anyone present to speak for or against this request for a variance for a medical cannabis dispensary at 5103 Telephone Road? Yes, sir. Come on up and introduce yourself.
My name is Daniel Stadler, and I do direct the handshake. That building's only like 20 feet from my house. I'm not in favor of this type of business being this close to my house. There's various concerns, but I don't see any positive to it for myself and my family. You're gonna do it if you're against it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Introduce yourself, boy.
Yes, my name is Cameron Haynes, and I'm from Passable, Mississippi. And when I look at that, I just want to know the benefits and the pros and cons behind the cannabis dispensary.
So you're opposed to that?
If it's gonna hurt the citizens and hurt everybody, and you know, down the drain, I don't know what it's gonna be. I just hope it don't just like it using the cannabis and all.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Appreciate your point of view. So you are opposed to it as well? Anyone here in support of this? Yes, sir.
My name is Kristen McKenney. Me and my dad, and then my cousin, this is, I'm a father. So this is my dad, John. But we're trying to start this company, and I understand it being right behind your backyard. There are regulations, so, I mean, no one can just come into the cannabis dispensary. You have to have a medical license, you can order, you can enter the building. The parking lot is in the front, connected to Telephone Road, so nothing will go on in the back. We also have to go on some businesses around the city's burning drugs, and we promise to, you know, run this business the same way we've been running other businesses. I do understand the negative behind cannabis, but since this is becoming a tool, and it's something that's still unknown nowadays, we really do think it's a great opportunity for the city and for people that really do need it. So I do understand everything, the negative thing about it, but we do, you know, try to keep positive and try to do the best for the people in our city.
Thank you, Mr. McKenney. John, you wanna speak?
I would. I'd just like to say, up nine at the planning commission meeting, I think it was the building inspector, he said this was the perfect use for that building. That was his word, perfect use. And he couldn't give me a reason why he wasn't recommending. It is on light industrial, the house in question is on light industrial. And he also said that pretty much any business that went in that building would need a variance. So my question is, I mean, why not my business? It used to be a commercial establishment, but there, and that house was there. I would just, you know, ask that you give us the opportunity, we're gonna run it just like we do a drug store, because that's basically what it is. It's a medical marijuana, and people can't just come shopping in those stores, so there's not gonna be a lot of traffic. You know, you have to have a medical marijuana card, and those will be checked at the door, and you will not be allowed entry. So I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, John. You understand these regulations were put in force by the legislature statewide, and the 250-foot variance? If that building was in another area, not within 250 feet of a residential area, it would certainly not be an issue, but.
How would y'all bring in a variance to somebody's road? So I guess I'm asking for that same consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone here to speak for or against? Mr. Church, you have any further comments?
No, I have none.
Is there a motion to to adopt the resolution denying the variance for medical cannabis dispensary at 5103 Telephone Road?
To deny it?
Deny the variance.
I have to give my two cents. I agree, if I was living right there in my house, I wouldn't want it there. No offense to you, I'm sorry. The, I think it's welcomed in Pasca Gula, and it's gonna be a great business. I personally would just as soon to get, try to find a different building. I wouldn't want it in my backyard. I, some of it.
Is there a second?
Sir.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have a consent agenda. Does any member of the council have any questions about consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have the city manager's agenda items. Mr. Silverman?
Yes, sir, Mayor Willis. The first item for council pertains to requesting assistance for District 2 County paving projects at our September 7th, 2021 council meeting, and approve paving assistance requests from District 2 and District 3. But as you know, District 2 Supervisor Melton Harris did pass away, so it's being requested by Supervisor Enid Morris that we just re-semit to make sure everything is compliant and meets the county standards. So before you tonight is just the District 2 County Paving Projects list, and this totals $807,000, and at $807,82 dollars and 0.08 cents.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution requesting assistance for District 2 County Paving Project? Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Is this, I'm sorry.
I was pleased to see where the priorities are being placed for these roads, so many of them in the undeserved areas that have not had new asphalt in quite a while, that definitely need it. When I'm down those roads, I agree that that's what needs to be.
Is this the similar to or the same list that we sent to before previously?
This should be the similar one that was submitted, yes, sir. And again, please know we may not be able to get all the streets that we submitted for, because they do have limited funds, but we have submitted this, and Supervisor Ken Taylor already has his list, and should be good to go. Hopefully, in the next month or two, the county will be able to start paving in Pasca Gula.
Any further discussion from the board? We truly don't take comments from the board on agenda items. We have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next one, Mr. Silverman.
The next item is just approving a closeout and final payment to grant construction for emergency sewer point repairs they provided in the Washington Avenue area. The total cost for the work was $73,600. Content Engineering has reviewed the request and has approved it. So tonight, we're just requesting payment and closeout for this project to grant construction.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution approving closeout and final payment for Washington Avenue to Cherokee Drive Sewer Repair? We have a motion in second. Any further comments? I was by there earlier in the week, just to look at it. They did a great job of finishing, cleaning up, and putting everything back, apparently just the way it was before we had the problem. They did, you got this, yeah. Well done. Any further comments? We have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next, city attorney's item. Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, we have one item tonight. It's a ordinance addressing the occupancy of the city's right-of-way. We've had several issues lately, one with Center Point, and another AT&amp;T with the board interfering the city's water lines and causing damage and, you know, boil water notices. And to try to address that better going forward, these ordinances will set some parameters on what their requirements are, what their expectations are, and use us more teeth if they fail to comply with those. So if you have any specific questions, I'll look through the ordinance, I'm happy to address them.
Do we have a motion to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 74 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Use and Occupancy of City Right-of-Way? We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Any questions of Mr. Moore?
One thing on this item right here going forward, and I think we've kind of started doing it, but, you know, I think we need to name and shame whoever was just carrying up our arms and causes to have these, you know, water issues, because.
Yes, sir, Councilor Parker, we completely agree. You know, utility companies, their fault, they need to accept responsibility. And so through not only naming them to Facebook, but through also this ordinance, I believe we will be able to, you know, place the true responsibility at their feet for their actions or inactions, as may be the case.
A lot of citizens don't know that's what's going on with their calling and putting things on Facebook, basically thinking that our lines are bad. I'm sure some of the lines are bad, but I think this should be put out there so we know what's going on.
That's right.
Yeah, the utility owners, if they do work that results in boil water notices being issued, this will require them to actually issue some sort of statement to alert the citizens that that's what occurred.
And that it was their fault.
Right.
Yes. Any further discussion? We have a second, motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have the docket of claims. Any questions regarding the docket of claims? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims? We have a motion in second. Any further discussion regarding the docket of claims? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is the payroll docket. Are there any questions regarding the payroll docket? Do we have a motion to approve the payroll docket?
Certainly. Thank you.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a mayor council items. Mr. Hyde, you're up.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I think it was like two weeks prior to Thanksgiving, Mr. Busby came in, kind of spoke on reference to the savage vehicle that I think he was letting the people next door to him relocate their savage vehicle to his property. And most of them still becoming an eyesore to the community, and I got residents on that street is very upset. Now, he told one of the residents that he would be removing those vehicles within five days, and that was prior to Thanksgiving. It's almost Christmas now. And Buzz, uh, that.
Yes, sir, Councilman Hyde. The planning and building department has issued letters of violations to Mr. Busby, and they are working up additional penalties for him not complying with these issues that have been caused by the savage vehicles being sold out there. And Josh could write a little more information as well.
I spoke to them today, and in their defense, with all the rain, they're fixing apartment line. The old bird's eye mode of storage facility, they're fixing that apartment line. So they did start moving them, they're starting to move them back, and then the rain hit again today, so they're, they're supposed to be gone this week. If they're not, then we're gonna take action against it. Now, there was other letters sent for other areas down that road. They're not taking it very serious. They're saying we sent it to the wrong place. No, there are junk cars at multiple homes down through there, they're piled up behind the house.
One resident has probably twenty cars.
Exactly.
Car, covers all.
There's a couple of them that moved. Looks like they moved with one house, the next. But there's, from Mr. Busby's property, down four or five houses, there are multiple vehicles there that we addressed at one time.
Yeah, I know.
Nobody has complied 100%. So we're working with them to get some stuff done, and if they. they don't, then we have other means to do this all over again.
Yeah, one of the areas you're speaking of that you approached, the gentleman that owned that property with those vehicles was on, he recently passed away. And I think his estate is trying to take care of that problem there. They've been in the process of, and they removed some of those vehicles.
Yeah, they didn't remove a few. Family members coming got their cars. But some of them moved from here down and went to the backyard. So it's kind of shuffled around. Some did leave, but they kind of shuffled. So we're trying to work with everybody over there, because it is a problem with multiple properties. But if we don't get the resolution we need, then we will take care of it.
And Josh, my concern is where the vehicles are going that have been moved to Krebs and now are going back to Alamoville Highway, do we allow junk yards in the city of Pasco Gula? Alamo, Lavo, I'm sorry. Lavo.
Yeah, well, birds' automotive goes, the property goes through.
Right. Do we allow junk yards in the city of Pasco Gula?
They're just a towing yard. So these, some of these cars were towed, wrecks, or a police department had towed.
And how long are they allowed to keep a towed vehicle before it goes to the junk?
Most of these storage yards will keep vehicles through. Most of them, your insurance is going to fix them up. They haul them, they haul them away. They pay the bill on them and they go away. People who don't have insurance, you have to go through a process of clearing the title, advertising, it's kind of like we do when we do a public period before they can release them. So sometimes you don't have cars that will be piled up in a storage facility. That is allowed, but it's been there since grandfathered in.
But it's temporary. It's a temporary...
It is temporary. In a grand, there's some that get left there, and they stay there longer than they should. But they're getting, it's been going on for 50 years.
I think it's time to change. I really want you to enforce the temporary nature of it and put some limits. If we need to change some ordinances, people don't need to have junk, wrecked, inoperable cars on their property in the city of Pasco Gula.
I think part of the problem is you have a motor repaired, the towing yard, and you have a body shop, all in one big property. So wrecks come in, they may sit in the back for months before they get them in the shop to get repaired. But I totally understand that, that some of the cars just didn't sit in there for a year or more. These are...
Even the situation right there, Josh, are we able to maybe have a limit on vehicles that they can store?
Numbers?
Yeah, numbers and a privacy fence of the right height, but maybe it's...
Yeah, I mean, it has to be fenced. So that's another issue we're having with some of these other areas in town. Cars are piling up, there's no fence. They filled up their fenced area to the point where now they're overflowing outside the street. And that is something we are trying to address now. Some of these have been here so long, they're kind of grandfathered in what was allowed back, way back when they opened. So it's time-consuming, and we're working at it.
Josh, we got one on Chico though, that we gave special use for about a year and a half ago to open. And if you drive by there right now, I bet there's 20 cars out in front of the building.
You mean on South Chico, right?
Yes. Spiders all shot.
Right. Kevin, Trans biscuit.
I mean, I'm going to be very hesitant going forward, giving anybody special use for that type of use because of that situation.
I mean, they're allowed to have a storage yard and store vehicles, as long as they're inside a fence and they're covered. So we can put the fence up when they move there.
But this is still building on a number of vehicles that they can have.
There should be when it comes to the size of the yard.
Right.
We don't want a salvage yard.
Right.
But we also don't want him in their business if they have cars that are repairable and they're letting somebody store it there until they save enough money to fix it.
So do we need to change the ordinance, put some limits like that per square foot?
We can look into it and see if we can figure out.
Numbers in the storage area?
We can use the parking or the ordinance.
And that it is not going to be streetfront. It's going to have to be behind the business building.
Right. It's got to be a pit in behind. You have, there's a couple in town that are on corner lots. Nothing we can do about it. Their rear property is going to be streetfront, but it's got to be fenced.
They got privacy fence, not chain link fence.
Not a falling down privacy fence either.
When you got like towing yards, say somebody doesn't have insurance, tow their vehicle, so it's sitting out there. So it's a responsibility of the towing company to clear it through the state so they can crush them or do whatever they need to do, but get it removed from the property.
And it used to be, you know, three months, you run the paper, you do this, do that. I was told recently that it's changed. I don't know. I haven't looked at the law. It used to be three months, you run the paper to the owner, you send a letter to the owner, and if he doesn't come pick it up, you take that paperwork down to the courthouse and they give you, if you own it, you can do what you want. But they say they changed that. It makes it a little harder. Sometimes it's taking six, eight months. And then you go through the process. It used to cost 25, $30 to do it. Now it's hundreds. So it's, it's hard for these guys to get rid of stuff that they have stuck with, that has cost them a ton of money. PD calls, wreck, they call, they go out, pick it up, rotation, and nobody picks it up. They lost money until they can find some way for you to get the title and sell it or scrap or whatever.
So do we need to talk to our legislators to streamline that?
Yeah, I know. I would like to look at what it takes now. We used to do it all the time. We got a towing company, Z. I think there's a little more legal into it now, because people were taking people's cars. And it was hard to then approve if they were identified or whatever. So I think they, they're taking the consumer, not the business anymore. So I think it's, it's made it a little hard for them. But we can look into it and see if we can figure out a way to streamline it a little bit.
Very good. Mr. Hyde, are you comfortable with that?
Yes. I mean, it wouldn't have even came to this point if he would just follow through on what he said he was going to do.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's the whole thing is, you know, I understand they're doing work, and we've had a lot of rain lately. It's turned into a mud hole. We've been trying to get the mud hole fixed. It just got worse. But they've had enough time to get this stuff moved. And I spoke with them today. And if it is not taken care of in the next few days, we will take action.
Thank you. Anything else? Next is executive session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session to determine if there's a need for executive session? Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That concludes the public portion of our agenda for this evening. There was no action taken while we were in executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.